We are all present. There is only one item on the agenda tonight. I would like to remind council that staff will be pausing intermittently to answer any of your questions. So, item 3.1, you will receive a presentation regarding the vacant property land use along the freeway. Planning manager Katie Wilkens presenting. Hi Katie.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. As a reminder, this is a continuation from our discussion a couple of weeks ago. We didn't get to all the items we wanted to discuss with you. I also wanted to extend Christopher's apologies. He's out sick today. He wanted to be here tonight, but wasn't able to make it. So, just as a reminder, development is up significantly over past years, and we have been getting many requests from developers, and so we did want to check in with council to make sure the direction we're giving to our customers is the direction that council wishes us to give. The one item we didn't get a chance to discuss is getting more specific policy direction regarding the development of vacant property along our existing freeway corridors. So, focusing on I-10 and the built portion of the Loop 303, there's about 870 acres of vacant commercial property, and most of this area is designated as business and commerce in the general plan. We have had several pre-apps. There have been proposals, everything from single-family residential to storage facilities to high-density residential to commercial and retail projects. So, if you remember what we did last time, we tried to put together identifying some of those properties that are vacant and give you some information on what we think is the direction, and then wanted to hear your feedback. So, starting with the area along the 303, and... There's the mass. So, south of I-10 to the Canyon Trails Town Center area, most of that area is already designated some type of residential. You might remember, we've had a couple of the Christopher Todd communities come in, changing a small commercial corner. Some of the areas were designated for multifamily, and they're going to the Christopher Todd product. That's one of the reasons, last time, we wanted to check in with you on those products. But, most of that area was already planned for some sort of residential development. So, as people have come in, we've kept with those plans since that was already planned use in the area. The exception being that there is part of the Canyon Trails Town Center that's not developed, and so that area is zoned for commercial. So, those are the plans we've been sharing with customers. We discussed the old Trotter Track site last time, that that area could be used for more office, higher-end business park, maybe even entertainment, a variety of uses, but not big-box distribution industrial, is what we were hearing. This area from the 303 east, it's a development known as Cervel East and Cervel West. That is an area, because it's such a short distance from McDowell to I-10, it is very prime real estate. It has very good access and visibility. We have had requests for residential, and anywhere from single-family residential to higher-density residential, and staff has been discouraging residential uses in favor of waiting for office or retail uses in that area. This Pebble Creek Marketplace is on the corner of Pebble Creek and McDowell is where the planned Winko. You've seen plans for Panera Bread and a Circle Case, and then recently, further in from Pebble Creek Parkway, we just did approve some plans for a multifamily development component. That area is mostly already planned out now, so we haven't been seeing many requests on that property except for smaller individual outlaw sites. So, moving along the Estrella Commons area, Fulton Homes is developing the eastern portion of this development as single-family residential. There's also a few projects moving forward, such as an Aldi grocery store. The hard corner of I-10 in Estrella Parkway, we have not seen any plans for that area. It is preliminary zoned. It has to, for any type of development, it'll have to come back to council for final zoning. But, right now, the preliminary zoning does call for some type of retail or office, and staff would promote that type of development and discourage using that as residential because it is prime real estate on there on Estrella Parkway and I-10. There is also, between the Bullard Wash and the Bullard Avenue, there are a couple of parcels that are vacant. The property along Bullard Avenue, there are a couple of hotels that have had site plans in, so we have had interest there. We haven't really gotten any other interest for the rest of the property, so it's zoned for commercial, retail, office-type uses. And then, jumping down here to the airport gateway, we talked about that last time, that the area around Cancer Treatment Centers of America would be primed for higher-end office buildings and more dense employment uses. So, finally, the other property we have is what's called Centerscape, so that's that area behind PF Chang's. We have had inquiries for residential in this area, too. The things, and we actually have some coming soon. So, this is one that I think council may be very interested in giving staff direction on. Now, this is a deeper parcel, so, and I might remind you, too, that some of the site, the Future Wellness Park wraps around here, and so it's almost an L shape. And it's hard to tell on this map, I apologize, but because the property is so deep, it is possible that someone could bring forward a plan that includes higher-density, high-end residential that could incorporate nicely into a mixed-use development that also includes entertainment, restaurants, office-type uses. And that's what we've been telling customers so far, that if they could come up with a plan that could incorporate residential in a really creative way, that created an exciting space, then we thought council would be open to it, but to just plot down a residential development without thought to how it might impact the rest of the area, that that might not be what council wanted to see on that parcel. So, that parcel in particular, staff would really appreciate your input on the future development of that one. And that really concludes what I have to say, so.
So, nobody has some glaring things? I have something, so you talk up so I can go up. Joe?
From a perspective of long-term, because that's the way I always look at this stuff, is that unfortunately or fortunately, whichever way you look at it, is the biggest, I guess, contributor to our general fund is sales tax. I mean, we can agree or disagree if that's a good mix, but it is what it is. And we have all this visibility along I-10. I see that as a major quarter, long-term, of our tax base, and I mean, commercial tax base because of the visibility, that where we can get people going through the city, dropping off and spending money, and contributing to our sales tax versus moving dollars around already in some of these developments. So, I would prefer, because it's my understanding, the way the general plan is set up right now, that's all commercial or retail that's along I-10 corridor. I personally think it's a big mistake if we change that, because we'll lose out on an opportunity, long-term, to shore up our tax base. And to me, from a tax base standpoint, if we're grabbing people coming off of I-10 that are either leaving or coming through, we're getting money that's not our residents, that's redistributing it through our jurisdiction. And I hate to see that give up, because we don't have that much frontage. I kind of see that areas are like our Bell Road, not to the extent of Bell Road all the way through, because you look at Glendale. Glendale, I think, has about two miles of Bell Road that's actually within its city. And look what that has generated, and I'm sure quite a bit from their sales tax standpoint, not just the residents, but people passing through. That's what I'd like to see. I think it's a big mistake we put a residential on there.
Next?
Let me recap what I heard, because I was sitting here thinking, you haven't said anything that I don't think we already have. The, I'm going to call it orange, for the lack of a better color, along the 303 is already residential. General plan kind of is on that way. Trotter Track, you said you guys are promoting office, retail, not big-box. Cervel East and West, same thing, office, retail, because of its proximity to McDowell. Marketplace basically is already done. Estrella Commons, we already have commercial on the right corner. We've got residential in there, kind of already laid down. Regional Center is the regional center. The Gateway Airport, we talked about last, or two weeks ago, and you got that summarized. So, the only thing that I'm hearing you ask, so have I got all that so far?
That is a perfect summary of the direction we're giving, so if anyone doesn't agree with that direction, that you're open to those areas being residential, that's what we'd like to hear.
Okay. I'm in favor of what I just said and what you just said. When it comes to the Centerscape, the PF Chang's area, I agree with Joe to the extent that we should maximize the retail we bring in. However, that particular parcel, I think, is ripe for a mixed-use thing similar to what we did at the Pebble Creek Marketplace. You've got a couple of restaurants in there. If we get a high-quality residential development that, you know, makes some of that walkable, but that must come with a retail component. I don't want to sell the farm for residential and go, well, we think we're gonna, it kind of needs to, for me, it needs to be an all-in-one. And that was the thing for me that made the marketplace very attractive, is it was a retail and multifamily, you know, as we say, mixed-use. I don't see any, I don't see a problem with doing the same concept in Centerscape. But, everything else you said, I'm 100% behind.
Brandon? I called on you. Don't push it to someone else.
So, yeah, so I also agree. I like that, I mean, I'm okay with the residential as a zone now along the 303 for there, and then, just like in the general plan, how we had off the freeway, you have more dense, and then it's less dense as you go. And then, yeah, and then also with the Centerscape, for future and going forward, I think it has to come with a commercial aspect as well, so it has to, yeah, and I prefer high-density, has to be high-density and the commercial, not single-family residential, especially along the freeways in those, especially on the I-10, that area there. Has to be a component of a commercial that would bring more residents to support that, especially with that area with the restaurants and then the Wellspring Park, and people be able to do things along that, a component of it. So, I like that you talked about it was a, it was a, yeah, a combined component. So, yeah, so I'm not in favor of single-family against the freeways for going forward, but a mixed-use commercial along the freeway that makes sense for that area is, I think that'd be good. And then, promote commercial along everything else, so that's where I think I stand, so.
Thank you, Sherri.
I think we're all pretty much on the same page. I kind of agree with what Bill said, and we only have so much land on the freeway system, and if we just use it for single-family housing, we are going to become just a better community. We're not going to have those employment and retail corridors, and we're not going to be able to keep people here for the sales tax, like what Joe mentioned, which is really important. I like what we've done in the past. We've even Estrella Commons, where we had a housing component, but yet, the whole front of that is going to be some sort of Aldi and other things. I think that's good. So, having said that, if there is a mixed-use, a high-density, well-done mixed-use, where it's not single-family, but maybe, you know, multifamily living on that PF Chang's space, where we add same thing, the restaurants, the shopping, kind of put that in there, where we're attracting it, then I think that becomes a very attractive, you know, spot for retail to mix, because they've got customers right there, so I think that would be good. Same thing for the Cervel East and West. I don't think that parcel, honestly, from driving by that one, that you really could do a nice, single-family, commercial thing there. I don't think it's really wide enough from just like, having driven by it a lot, and I think that's not the best use of that property. Again, if there's something like the Pebble Creek Marketplace that wants to go in there with that type of, you know, commerce, and then have a smaller component of the retail, I think that would be great. But, we can't just become a bedroom community. We only have so much land, and I think we need to make sure we use the best opportunity for it.
Hi, Sheriff.
Well, I'm not going to talk about all the other stuff they've talked about, so I want to zero in on Centerscape and on the airport gateway. On Centerscape, where PF Chang's is, it would be nice if we had a mixed-use in there, where we had stores on the bottom floor, or restaurants, and maybe lofts, where it's walkable for folks. I think we need to offer, we don't really have a restaurant area per se in Goodyear. We're spread out everywhere. It would be nice if we could, if they're not going to put a hotel in there, which probably would be the best place for it, for access on and off the freeway, then perhaps a developer will be bold enough to come back with plans that would have retail on the bottom or restaurants on the bottom, and it could be different types. I read recently that Sam Fox is selling his restaurant chain. It's being bought out. I forgot by who, so that may mean he is not even looking at expanding in the West Valley, so I don't know, but I had hoped he would be coming in there. For the airport gateway, around CTCA, for the land that they own, they pretty much will tell us what they want to develop in there, will they not?
Likely, they will come to us, but there is immediately, but there is a lot of land to the west of that as well.
Okay, to the left of the hospital, going towards Bullard, that cotton fields, okay. I don't know what to do with that, really. I don't see residential particularly, but then, you know, CTCA treats a lot of patients, and they do rent rooms from local hotels to take care of their patients who are in just for treatment. They may, in the long run, want to build a permanent facility, and I don't know what to call it. It wouldn't necessarily be a hotel, but it might be something that they own, that they could use to house their patients, you know? Maybe it's, I don't know what it is, but to complement CTCA on the Bullard side, it's across the street from the hot sauce place. And perhaps we can do something really creative on that corner, but I don't really see it as housing, but I don't want to see another big box. But, I don't know what I want to see there either, but I'm open. That's what I'm trying to say. I'm very open. If someone comes with something that we've never, ever, ever thought of, we may need to talk about it, even though we don't necessarily see that vision right now. And thank you for bringing it forward, Katie.
Lot of good ideas, everyone. I've been talking to Act Dev about, we don't have a downtown, so if we could take from Litchfield to McDowell and connect that all, we could have what I call a downtown. It may be a little different, but you'd have Litchfield, McDowell, and fill in those like it would be a downtown. And concentrate on that, and don't give away the land until we can find somebody that's willing to do that. You have space there to bring in some kind of restaurant, some kind of event that has a nesting place there, that has a place that you could, restaurants that you could sit outside, you know, even our Mexican restaurant on, yeah, Federico's, they have a great one out in front of there, it's right out in the front of the restaurant, and it's very appealing. And I don't know why, we just don't, we don't have anything. We're not going to get anything. So, why don't we just take that street and focus on it? We're going to do incentives, we're going to do something, let's do something really different, add some designs there, and add some different landscaping, and add some walkways, and as far as behind PF Chang's, I think that'd be a great place for a hotel, because they could enter from one side of Bullard, and they could use it on McDowell. Again, they're going to have customers at the restaurants, because there's people staying at the hotel. Hotels don't have dining rooms as much as they used to, and so I just think that we ought to do that. I'm not so sure yet of giving up our I-10 land on the border houses yet. I'm just not sure unless somebody comes up with some marketing that has something attached to it, some business attached to it, a walkable neighborhood, that you've got some entertainment and a restaurant or something like that, so people don't have to drive. But, think about it, we, I actually think I could do it, is I could, if we get anything in the regional shopping center, you could walk all the way down that McDowell to the corner of Litchfield and around. It just would connect, but I think it's going to take a great-looking, an architect trying to pull that together by walls and trees and buildings and whatever in between, or, you know, walls with benches that you can sit along the way, and that's kind of what I have in mind. So, as far as the Trotter Track site, I think we ought to hold off until we see we get something, or go out and research. I was just telling Julie today that when, before they came a plan, I think it was like in 2006 or '07, with a surfing building. Otherwise, it was an ocean with surfing, and it was automatic surfing inside, it was huge, so it was like a stadium, and they wanted to come here. At the time, we didn't have the resources, and we didn't really know where we could put it, and I think that's as far as the decision on that one. But, it's got such visibility, we should, I just can't believe that somebody isn't going to come and notice that you actually can see the business and everything from both sides of I-10 and from distance in Goodyear, so it, you know, we're a little impatient, all of us are, because we were just expecting the regional shopping center to be up, but I think we're going to even hear something about that coming up. I understand everybody's kind of working on that, so. Anything else, any other suggestions? Oh, Bill, wait a minute. Did you write that down? Bill just said he agreed with me. Would you?
Mayor, may I make a comment?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. I've been excited about this conversation, because I think it's so integral for setting the future for Goodyear, and for all the reasons that everybody has talked about. I support maintaining the intent of the general plan as it is, but with some of the exceptions that have also been discussed. I think our developing, developer community is coming up with a lot more creativity, mixed-use commercial to create that, those hubs, those walkable environments that people are interested in. I live near the PF Chang's, and that is a very deep lot to support, something unique and unusual. I do have a concern about backing residents right up to the freeway, not only noise, but also just general air and air quality and things, exposure to exhaust and things. I-10, I think realistically, we can consider will be a busy, you know, way of moving traffic as Buckeye grows, as we grow. I don't see, even though we're getting relievers, I don't see that abating, and we don't have any substantive public transportation coming out to relieve. So, I think we, to support Goodyear's family orientation and health and well-being, I'm not hugely in favor of putting the single-family residents right close up to the freeway. But, I think we have a great opportunity to do some very creative and exciting things with what you've outlined in pink or orange, depending on how you see it.
Any other comments?
You know, you bring up a, kind of a good point that we haven't really specifically talked about. The development community is going to single-family or multifamily, because that's the easiest, and that's the way that they can convert this land. And we've always been really supportive of those changes in those areas that I've referred to as the pocket commercials, the corner of, you know, East and West, that's one and a half acres or two acres. We've been really, I think, supportive of doing residential, multifamily in those little pocket commercial pieces. But, I think to kind of piggyback on what you've said is, these are the large, last pieces that we have, and I'm okay with doing them in other places, I'm just not okay doing them here. And I think that kind of goes to what you were saying, but it then avoids the situation that Laura just mentioned, is we're not putting residential up against the highway, because that's what we want our commercial corridor to be, or our retail corridor. So, you know, we've always been really supportive of trying to get the development community moving, but I think in this case, these pink boxes are kind of our last stand, at least for me.
Well, you know, at the city center, we were having office or residents above, so we had the stores on the bottom and on the top, and I don't know how that is to market anymore. I haven't looked into that, so I don't know, but it works all over the country in city centers.
And what I'm, I think what I'm saying is very similar to what everything else is saying here, except this is our, what I'd call our golden triangle, this area here. Once it's built, it's built, so we really want to think about what's going on here that generates our solid base, long-term, because we're going to have a lot of things as we move forward, whether it's public safety and fire stations, et cetera, they're going to have to be met, and unfortunately, it's sales tax is going to be a need to do it. So, when you look at these corridors, where before we put anything of substance on it, we want to make sure, long-term, it's going to be sustainable for us from a revenue standpoint. And that's the only point I was trying to make on there, is keep it commercial. Now, again, if somebody comes up with a unique idea, because the high-density rentals on top of retail does generate general fund sales tax. Residential rental, I mean, residential property, resident, single-family, I would not be in favor of anything along those corridors like that. But, that's the point I was trying to make, is very valuable land, let's just make sure that we're thinking through before we put something on it.
It would be nice if sometime we could sit down with some developers and talk about it, and have them be, you know, we need to be realistic on what is possible and not possible, but it would be nice, and we haven't had that in a long time, creativity. Let's create something, and I know create means dollars, so maybe the city will have to make some investment on some of this, I don't know, on the infrastructure and maybe the benches and the walls and certain things that to enclose this in, I don't know, but it would really be nice to bring some in and just hash it over and talk about it, or even bring someone in that could kind of visually give us some idea, or show us. We had so many of those from the city center pictures, and they're probably now somewhat outdated, but maybe not, but if you could get, if you could get some pictures, like we showed the community, and it just kind of gives you a visual of what's possible with that size of land and the type of businesses, it would be realistic that we could, that we could bring forth. Because even at that point, you still can put a different kind of drugstore in, you can put a dry cleaner in in between there, you can do some of those businesses around the restaurants and the homes if it's designed well, so love to look into it, anyway. I'm not, I don't see anybody from Act Dev that are smiling or saying, yes, this could work, or. So, any other, any other discussion? Okay, I think we're done, then. Thank you very much. Oh, you have more?
I do, no, I don't, necessarily discussion, but I did just want to remind council that in the staff report, we also just briefly mentioned that ADOT is in various stages of setting the alignment for the State Route 30 and the southern portion of the 303, and we are already getting development inquiries and anticipate some rezoning and possibly even some annexation requests coming to the city. So, we, staff just proposed the idea that we would be happy to provide you with a yellow paper, or if you wanted a future work session like this to discuss the visioning for that area, you know, we, I think at this point, we would, you know, maybe think about it and just give that direction to Julie.
You want a yellow paper first?
No, we have a question real quick. But, we didn't include that tonight, because it was a little bit different of an area than talking about these infill parcels.
Holly?
Katie, is there a map available that shows us the proposed exactly route where it goes through our city, so that we can understand what areas you're going to be talking about?
That's, I know it's in various stages. I might need help from...
Well, I don't need it now.
No, but I know from Saraville East, the State Route 30 has been pretty well set. To the west, I think it's still not quite set yet, how it's going to interact with the 303.
So can you give us a, a copy of a map of where it's set?
Yes.
Yeah, best guess, best guess, just give us an idea, because when you come in and say they're going to come in and they want to rezone, and they want to incorporate, and they want to do this, that, who, where are they?
Yes.
That's what I need to know, so, thank you, hon.
So do we also have some numbers that show us those spaces and how many acres that is, or the space of all, along, along McDowell and those? You know, in between, you know, the, the land that's not developed yet, like the one next to PF Chang's, okay? Maybe she could, maybe they could make it to that. I'm just asking, I'm just curious, what could, what could fit in there, is it, the size meets what criteria?
Thank you, Mayor, yes, we would be able to provide basically a more detailed map than this one that showed the acreage, and if it was on paper, I think it'd be a little more detailed to see exactly where the boundaries are than throwing something on PowerPoint.
Great, good. Okay, well, thank you very much. Yes, don't go yet.
I have one, I guess it's kind of related to, to that. You keep talking about city center, and I'm under the impression that city center is, as we once knew it, is not really the vision anymore. Do you guys believe that? And, and this might be a little off-topic, so I'm going to look at the attorney, but if we can't talk about it tonight, maybe a yellow paper on where this thing, I mean, just, so go as far as you can until he says stop, but.
I, I think that there may be some overall visioning that might be a good future discussion, and we can share that information with you of, you know, the planned city center site, and how that relates to some of the other destination areas, such as the Regional Center, these vacant properties along I-ten, I think they all kind of relate, because they'd all be competing for the same restaurants, retail opportunities, office spaces.
And I think that's kind of the genesis of where I'm talking about, if we, we've all now very publicly said, we're not really going to get a mall, we're going to get a something, a regional something there. City Center is kind of the same thing, we're not really going to have City Center there, but we haven't finished the, after the semicolon, so that's what I'm looking for in the future.
Julie, would you, can you address that in some way that might?
Yes, certainly.
Thank you.
So staff is currently engaging with the owners at the Regional Center site regarding what the possibilities could be for a future city center. But it does beg the question as to, we had an old city center that had been envisioned, 40 acres, which is down by our ballpark and our new recreation campus. And so that area has been revisioned, simply with the placement of the rec campus there. So these are future conversations that we will be bringing forward regarding the old city center area and a potential new city center area, and those conversations are ongoing right now, and we hope to bring those back to council in the near future. And then if I could follow up on just a couple of the other items, I wanted to confirm that in a yellow paper, we'll provide a more detailed map of each of the McDowell properties, and that we'll have a future work session regarding State Route 30 and potential routes and land uses surrounding that future transportation corridor.
Great, okay, anything else from council? Okay, so I guess we're supposed to start this meeting immediately, the thing, okay, so just get, we're going to change or we're going to sit down here? Okay, I'm going to adjourn this meeting, and we'll get on the dais and start the other, this meeting is adjourned.